Sir Robin, can you please take your seat? Okay. Let's get this going. We're gonna call the meeting to order. We're gonna start with black salute, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please pray with me. Dear Lord, please bless our school leaders with wisdom, integrity, a sense of humor, patience, and the physical and mental energy equal to their task tonight. Bless them with strong support from our parents, teachers, and the community we serve. Enable and empower our school leaders to act as encouragers for our teachers, parents, and our students. Help each of us to be mindful of the overall mission to educate the youth in our community. You said, "Peace I leave with you, my peace I give to you." We join our prayers tonight to those of the people of Ukraine who look to the heavens for peace and protection during this time of violence and oppression, and we ask for your mercy that it may change the hearts and minds of those who have chosen the path of destruction. We ask these things in your name. Amen.
Do roll call.
Mr. Newsom. Mr. Riley.
Aye.
Mrs. Rowland.
Present.
Mrs. Truitt.
Present.
Mrs. Zemrashid.
Here.
Okay. We're gonna do presentation of employment of the month and Friends Education Award. Certified Employee of the Month is Ms. Molly Carter, and she's a Spanish teacher at Poe High. Hola. That's awesome.
I asked the staff and some students to help me with Ms. Carter's write-up, and I kept hearing about, "She's kind, she's friendly, she's patient." Her patient from your students, not your coworkers, but your... And so we kinda put this together, and I think it summarizes her fairly well. Ms. Carter is an exceptional teacher. Her dedication and service to Ponca City High School is truly special. Ms. Carter is kind, giving, patient, and has a heart to serve others. Anyone who knows Ms. Carter would probably agree to these terms. Yet, those terms don't depict her value. Her consistency in character is even more impressive, given the scope of her many responsibilities. As a leader among the staff, Ms. Carter uses her character to support, encourage, and defend initiatives that are best for students. As a teacher, she uses her patience and kindness to create a safe, welcoming environment where students can thrive. As a student council sponsor, Mrs. Carter uses her servant's heart to model and inspire future servant leaders. Ms. Carter is indeed kind, giving, patient, and has a heart for service. However, what makes Ms. Carter so special are not just these admirable traits, but what she uses these traits to allow her to do. Ms. Carter is an advocate, a mentor, a friend, a leader, and much more. Thank you, Ms. Carter, for being you, and thank you for being so much to so many of us. Thank you, Ms. Carter.
Congratulations.
Congratulations. Okay, next, we have Support Employee of the Month. It's Nicole McKee with the Child Nutrition Personnel at East Middle School.
We'd like to recognize Nicole, or we call her Nikki McKee, as the March Support Employee of the Month. Nikki is a full-time child nutrition program custodian at East Middle School. She's a very hard and versatile worker. There's not a position in the East Cafeteria that she hasn't filled with full capabilities when needed. Oh, excuse me. When needed, Nikki steps in with the coworkers out, which is every day. She does this without being asked, and she always jumps in and starts working where she is needed. She always has a smile and encouraging word. Very often, and this happened with me, I pulled up to the dock at East, and I heard music coming out of the freezer. It's a walk-in freezer, and the door was shut. And I listened for a while and determined it wasn't the radio, but it was Nikki singing "Ten Below Zero" inside. She sings and she dances as she works. We've even heard her singing in the freezer at "Ten Below." Nikki keeps the East kitchen staff lifted up and laughing with her positive spirit and joy that she brings to work every day. We cherish Nikki as a quality staff member of the Ponca City Public Schools' child nutrition program. Thank you so much for all you do for our program.
You might do Stephanie, too.
Oh, I'm sorry. This is Stephanie Gross, and she is our manager at East Middle School.
Just so people know who you are.
Yeah.
That's Nikki.
My bad.
Nikki was...
I just figured everybody knew her from her Facebook page.
You never know.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Friend of Education is Lisa Simmons. She is a volunteer at Trout Elementary.
And I'm sorry she's not here. She must've had a light customer.
Accepting this award will be Adam Lee.
There we go.
On her behalf.
Well, you know, the last one sings and dances, so let's see what you can do, Adam.
Did you want me to go ahead and read it?
Sure, definitely.
It's an honor to present Lisa Simmons with the Friend of Education Award for the month of March. Ponca City Schools provide this award to individuals or a business that lends support to our schools. Lisa is a quiet presence with lots of action. She has been an active PTA member for several years. She is currently serving as our PTA secretary. Whatever the project, Lisa is there lending a helping hand. During some of the hottest days of summer, Lisa and her family attacked the overgrown flower beds at Trout Elementary. They brought chainsaws and shovels to trim the bushes that had been hit by the ice storm. Since then, the Simmons family has returned to trim up the new growth. Lisa owns a fund business on Grand Avenue named Cast Iron Company. They are a sponsor to our PTA fundraiser, The Trout Card. She's assisted with our annual PTA T-shirt sales. We are very grateful to have involved parents like Lisa Simmons. She's making our school better, not only for her own children, but all the students at Trout Elementary. So she's wonderful. Her husband's wonderful as well, so I'm sorry they are not here tonight. And you know what? We've been doing this a long time. Thank you for continuing it. I think it's important that we recognize our people and our friends out there. Thank you all.
Thank you. There's pictures in the hallway, please.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you, everybody.
Congratulations. Nikki could sing and dance, probably.
I wanna work with Nikki.
She's a good girl.
Okay. Next, we have public comments. And we currently do not have any. Now, we have reports of potential board discussion on 2021 dropout reports.
Hopkins? Dr. Hopkins?
Right.
Good evening. I'm Delanna Hawkins, Director of Secondary Curriculum and TLE.
It's there in the right corner.
Yes, it is.
I love how you guys do that.
I am here this evening. I appreciate the opportunity to be here and present to you the second dropout report for this school year. Uh-oh. Here?
No.
Nope, it's not in there.
Brian, what do you need to sign into? We had it up earlier. Click Sign In to Sync Data. There you go. There we are.
Okay. Earlier this year, this school year, in November, I presented to you the 2020 dropout report, and now I'm presenting to you the 2021 dropout report for grades seven through 12. And this is because the state has changed their reporting procedures. It used to be a certified report that was turned in the wave, and it is no longer that. It's more of a rolling report. So, as you will see, the 2020 data was not our best year. That was the first year of COVID, and the 2021 has done as we expected it to. Our dropouts did go up, although they are not as bad as what we really expected them to be. So that is good news. We did go at the high school level from '20 to '26. Now, a little bit of information about this for you is some of these moved out of states. As you know, our community and our population got very mobile during COVID. They went to live with families, with evictions and things like that. And if they moved out of state and didn't report the information of where they were going, it became a very difficult situation to find them. We've hunted down as many as we could, and we've gotten verifications of enrollments and records requests. It also gets a little complicated with private schools, and they have different reporting or different records request procedures that we have to follow, but they do not. So that's some of those numbers as well. In response to this, a couple of things we've done to fix down the road. We've tightened the withdrawal process or the transfer process. We are using one form across the district now that asks for more specific information when they leave our school system, so we have a better opportunity to track them down. And then, we're improving communication across our sites. We had a couple of meetings already. We intend to continue those meetings with the staff who are primarily responsible for the withdrawal process. So those are some proactive measures our district's taking to prevent this or losing those, or as many as we can. Any questions?
What was the total number of students 2020 versus 2021? Where I'm going with this, what percent's the 19 versus the 14 of total students?
Total students, seven through 12, we go '23 to '31. I'm sorry, yeah.
Wouldn't it be six through...
It's seven through 12.
On this report?
Uh-huh.
Okay, so total students of 2020 was how many?
Total students of 2020 was 23.
No, I mean, total number of students.
Oh, in our district, in seven through 12?
Trying to determine what's... Is that percentage gone up or down?
Our enrollment was down in '21.
Yeah, that's why 19 is really worse than 14.
In '20, we actually went into full closure that last semester. So if somebody left, we may not have known it at all. So, in the spring of 2020. And then enrollment was down.
But we down quite a bit in 2021?
About 250 kids. Which we're back up now.
So 19 does not appear to be that much worse than 14, other than we were down a lot more kids.
Correct.
So it really is worse.
Correct.
Dropout rate is a lot higher.
If you go percentage-wise, if you go by number of students.
Total students, that's where I was going with it.
And in consideration of those reporting changes, too, because they were a very different criteria in 2014 than they are in 2020. They're a lot more specific and restricted.
That seems to be a standard with State Department of Education on a lot of things, changing the reporting methods.
We are still above the state.
But it's hard to get a good grasp on what's going on when they change everything on us.
We're trying, and it's hard to compare year to year when the guidelines change, yes. So there's some things that have been put in place that will help us. A lot of this had nothing to do with us, our students that just dropped out. It was because of a move, or we didn't get records, or state to state. So as far as our own students dropping out, we had a handle on those. So it had to do with mobility. We had some students that didn't even live in Ponca City that were doing PCBA with Ponca City, so...
So we really can't determine a percentage?
We could, if I could go back.
But it wouldn't be that accurate?
It's not going to be accurate, no.
Do you think that they're going to keep the same level of criteria moving forward?
Yes. The state... The school report cards were waived last year. And indications so far see, I mean, they pretty well... We'll get back on that track. And that report looks, it shows the graduation rate as an overall percentage of graduates in each cohort. It doesn't show a dropout report. So that's kind of the direction I think they're heading in their records collection. Rather than highlighting the negative, it's more of the positive of the graduation rate and a percentage, an overall percentage. That's what we'll probably see down the road.
Resetting right now. We're in the reset.
Reset is exactly right.
Yeah.
So a percent of graduation really would not make any difference to the number of students where the dropout rate would.
Its numerator and denominator are the total number of students in a specific cohort, dependent on the year they started, their freshman, their ninth grade year. That clock starts ticking. And we get points for four-year graduates, five-year graduates, and six-year graduates.
Wait, so that's seven through... You said that the data will start with freshmen?
This is seven through 12.
So then...
So we'll continue... I'll keep sharing this data with you, but the state report card doesn't show this data. It shows the number of graduates as far as... And then in the site, it shows attendance. When he's asking about percentage, I was really referring to his question more about percentage and overall number of students. That's the report we tend to go with on service of students and overall numbers. Any other questions? Okay. Thank you. Now, our superintendent reads report with potential board discussion. We're gonna do legislative and COVID-19 updates.
Now, we went to New Kirk for our Region Three board meeting, and there was quite a discussion on legislative topics. And hopefully, I can get this to pull up.
I think it's down in the toolbar.
There we go. Okay, so I'm gonna... Anna was not there at our Region Three meeting, so I'm just going to give a brief update of where we are with legislative hot topics and things that have passed out of committee. And as you know, I've kept you informed on this, that the voucher education accounts are big, hot topics. And last Wednesday, Adam and I went to the Capitol and were in the Senate Appropriations Committee during the discussion of Senate Bill 1646, which is the Oklahoma Empowerment Act. And as it was written previously, it was an account that would be established for current and potential private school students and home-schooled students for specific costs. And there were a list of costs that this could go to, and this could be tuition. It could be for hardware needed for, like a Chromebook. It could be for transportation to and from that school. So it's an education spending account that would be in its own account, but would be pulled from state aid with no accountability measures that public schools face with OCAS reporting or state federal testing results. So, as you can imagine, you know that public educators have been opposed to that. We love our private schools, and we love that people have a choice. But bottom line is, public tax dollars are for public services, and public ed serves the masses of our students. We have 700,000 students in Oklahoma who are educated through public ed. If this comes to pass, it could cost, and I'm getting a little bit ahead of myself, with just the kids in private school, $174 million to come through the formula. Now, we had this discussion in finance the other day, so how would that hurt Ponca City specifically for our students in private schools? We won't know that. And why rural school districts are really opposed is it goes into the state aid formula, and it's factored and dispersed out. So we really wouldn't know how it would hurt us, but it would certainly hurt those rural schools that don't even have a private school close. So there were some amendments to the bill. So we were down there in the morning, and we had heard that it was going to be heard first thing in Senate Appropriations Committee, and Senator Treat wasn't even in the Appropriations Committee. So we got to listen to a whole bunch of fun bills, and then we heard that he was going to come in right after lunch. And sure enough, he did. He came in right after lunch, but they were busy making amendments. So the amendments excluded home-school students, because all of a sudden, I'm gonna home-school my child, and then I'm gonna have a $5,800 education account. So that was pulled, and there was a cap placed on eligibility. So it's $154,000 for a family of four. So that equates to incomes of 300% of free and reduced lunch programs. So when you're at a certain level, that's your eligibility cap. The title was stricken from this bill, and when a title is stricken, that means that there can be changes made to the bill. He knew that there was not, that this was going to be a close vote. So Senator Treat said over and over, he's willing to do whatever if he can get the votes of the Senate to get out off the Senate floor. So the title was stricken. It did pass the Senate Appropriations Committee 12 to 8. And interestingly enough, Senator Treat is not on the Appropriations Committee, but he got a vote because he's Senate pro temp. And then Senator McClure, who's the floor leader, he came in right before the vote, walked in. Rumor was, the governor was in the hallway, you know, waiting to be standing in... Yeah, standing in that room if... So senators would have to look him in the eye. Regardless, if two additional senators had not had a vote, this would have passed out of Senate Appropriations Committee at 10 to 8. So, we've got a task ahead of us. It will go to the Senate floor. When it will go, it could be between now and March 24th. That's when a bill has to be heard in the House of Origin. But with the delay, that gives time for there to be continual changes to the bill. Now, Senator Treat vowed in that Senate Appropriations Committee that he would ensure this would not pass unless there was enough money pumped back into the formula to make public ed whole again. That's not legislated, so we'll see what happens there. Now, Senator Coleman has said that he's tired of hearing from educators. I know that PCPS has literally been in his ear on this the entire time. But he said, "This is a bill about parents, not about educators," and he wants to hear from educators. And when this was polled, when they first put out the initial info, the question was, "Do you want to have choice in your child's education?" Nothing was said about money coming from the state aid funding formula and public ed. So most people would say yes. I would probably say yes as well. So, interesting perspectives. I had dinner with a friend whose grandchildren go to private school, and they are against this. They say they pay to have their kids in small classes. They don't want private schools to fill up. So I thought that was quite an interesting perspective, too. And Senator Dossett out of Owasso really had a hard line of questioning for Senator Treat, and he was pinpointing the public ed questions just directly on. And he said, "So, you know, here we are. We're going to provide private education or provide an education spending account for those who want to go to private ed. Surely, private schools have a cap. How many will they be able to accept?" And I think his exact words were, "It will open a whole new market." And every educator in the room just took the wind out of them, you know? So in other words, there's gonna be more private schools that pop up. So we'll see how this goes. I have reached out to all of our people. They know. Julie Miller told us that at OSSBA, if every educator can get two parents to reach out to their legislature on that, that could sway, that would be enough constituents to sway the vote. Now, still stands, Representative McColl says it still won't be heard in the House, but I'm telling you, anything can happen at the Capitol. So even if this fails this year, I do believe that it's going to be a topic that keeps coming back around.
Do you know what the makeup of the appropriation committee is, Republicans versus Democrats?
Uh-huh. There were... Well, all the Democrats voted yes, and two Republican... Or voted no. All the Democrats voted no, and two Republicans voted no. So it must've been six to whatever. So, and the two Republicans that voted no were rural school senators.
Are there any committees going on right now that are talking about, you know, the funding formula or anything? You said that there's no legislation brought up, but are there any committees that are going on?
You know, I don't know what he's doing behind the scenes, but he did say, "We will make public ed whole." And I know that the funding is higher this year, so we'll see what happens. And here's the deal, the budget's approved... Yeah, it has already been approved. So, you know, I don't know how they can make...
They'll do legislation, so this would be voted on, and then they would just take their word, and they would make it through with the budget.
Oh, their word is so good.
We shall see. So that's where we are in... I know we have admin council tomorrow, and I'll talk to our principals tomorrow, and we're gonna develop an action plan on how we are going to get at least two parents to contact their legislature, because, you know, people don't realize that is going to pull money out of our system that we currently have. And we've made headway over the last two years with per pupil spending and the historic teacher pay raise, and this will absolutely obliterate all costs, all growth we've made. Unless they find a way to make the budget whole, but we'll see. Lots can happen, is what I'm trying to say here. So some really quick Senate Education Committee bills, these have passed. Senate Bill 112, Pemberton, Adam Moscoghi, expands to support employees' transfer outside of capacity. You know, the big transfer law, it says certified employees don't have to seek the transfer. This only makes it fair. Support employees do not have to seek the transfer. They move right to the top of the list. Senate Bill 1142, Standridge, Adam Norman, restricts schools from maintaining, promoting books that make as their primary subject, the study of sex, sexual activity, or sexual lifestyles. And this is probably a hot topic bill that you've read about in the Tulsa World or whatever news source you listen to. So we will see. I will tell you from our weekly superintendent's meeting that we have with OASA that some of the metro-area schools are starting to have this challenge. At Bixby, there was a split vote on three books, and the board voted... Well, I don't even know what the split was, but it...
Three to two.
Three to two, to keep the books in the school. And I would be interested to know who all, whose children have cell phones, because two swipes and you can see more than any book in our library. I will tell you that we have a board policy that anybody can come in and review our curriculum and review our books. So my advice to parents would be, talk to your teacher, talk to your principal, review our curriculum before you go to such vast measures as this. And that's the point that we're trying to make with our senators as well. This is Senate Bill 1307, and it's from Senator Coleman. It requires student suicide prevention information to be printed on the student IDs. So it would just be the hotline for suicide prevention that would be printed. Not a bad bill, and we print these anyway, so just three more digits on there. Senate Bill 1583, Pew, out of Edmund, repeals the TLE requirements. And that has passed out of committee. And we talked a little bit about this at OSSBA the other night, and I clarified with Julie, and then it would be a board decision, what you would do. Personally, we love the framework, the Marzano framework. The tool that we use, the eye observation, is 20,000. I think it went up to 22,000 this year, a year. That's not a lot of money for an observation tool for 350 certified teachers and 37 administrators, or however many we have. But we could also tweak some things on that. Currently, every element has to be observed, and that puts a lot of pressure on teachers. This bill came about because teachers are struggling to make up academic losses and behaviors and depression of students, and they do not want this added burden. I think we would still keep the framework. We focused on Marzano's work for many, many years in this district. Just the tool, I don't know what we would use, and that would be a board decision should this come to pass. Now, I don't think I have it in here, but there is a part of the TLE that is called the PL Focus, the Professional Learning Focus. This year, our focus is all the same. It's building relationships with students, but it's what the teacher selects. There is a bill out there to do away with the PL Focus, should the TLE stay in place. Here are some Senate Appropriation Committee Bills of Interest. Senator Treat did speak on this from Senate Appropriations Committee. It's 1592. It directs the Educators' Professional Liability Insurance Program for full-time and part-time public school personnel to provide liability coverage for up to $1 million in coverage per occurrence. So that's a good bill that would just protect our teachers even further if they were found liable. Now, I will tell you, a crime... Now, I will tell you, a crime is a crime. And, you know, if something illegal is done, there is no liability insurance protection. Senate Bill 1673 is by Pew out of Edmond. It's the OLAP. It provides a sliding scale income eligibility based on a family's number of children. Currently, beginning in eighth grade, people can apply for OLAP if the family makes $50,000 or less of taxable income. The proposal is if there's one or two kids, it's 50,000. If there are two and three, 60,000. If there are three and four, 70,000. And more than four would be 80,000. So that's a good bill, too. Helps our families, helps our students. House Common Education Bills of Interest, there's quite a few of these. 1919, Blantet out of Tulsa sets the minimum ratio of student to certified school counselors, 250 to 1. We are way over that currently, so we would have to find some more counselors.
What are we at?
Jennifer, what is it, 450 to 1? 401, somewhere in there. With our response counselors, we're down, because we've added the additional. Our ratio is down. However, we've lost a counselor throughout the year in one of our, so we're actually down a counselor. House Bill 3084 is Hillbert out of Bristow. It removes the boundary requirements for school transportation. And Julie talked to you all about this last Thursday night. Julie Miller is an attorney with OSSBA. And basically, if we want to go pick up a kid that's farther than our boundaries, we can certainly do that. House Bill 3253, Nolan out of Sound Springs allows OLAP to also be used for career tech programs. So not just higher ed, but career tech as well. This one failed. House Bill 3234, Crosswhite Hader out of Yukon. It would invalidate election results with less than 40% of eligible voters voting. It failed. So if we look at our number of eligible voters, I doubt we have 40% of eligible voters vote in any election. House Bill 3506, Provenzano out of Tulsa provides, oh, I did add it in here, provides an exemption for the PL Focus for a teacher who exceeds 25 hours of annually required professional development. So we have some required professional development, and then our teachers seek that on their own as well. So that would eliminate the PL Focus for several. This was Ty Burns out of Morrison, who used to teach with us. House Bill 3968, summer transfers qualify for extracurricular athletics. So currently, per OSSBA, I'm sorry, OSSAA regulations of a student transfers in the summer, they have to sit out for a year of varsity athletics. They can play JV, or if they're in junior high, they can play JV in junior high. But that failed. And the reason that failed is what I would, the reason I would imagine that failed is because there's a Senate bill that I'm throwing over here. It has not been heard in committee. Senate Bill 1419, Senator Dom out of Broken Arrow, allows a student to gain immediate eligibility upon transfer. That means there would be a lot of transfers just based on OSSAA activities. Now, you know, those three things, your capacity limit, your attendance, and your discipline, still go into effect. So we'll see. We're staying up to date on that, and we've alerted our coaches and our sponsors. Senate Bill 4389, Baker out of Yukon defines computer sciences as computing systems, networks, and the Internet, data analysis, algorithms, programming, and impacts of computing. So it changes the graduation requirements to include two units of computer science or technology engineering excluding word processing, keyboarding, and typing courses. So that will change our graduation requirements. House Elections and Ethics Committee Bills, there was just one that I wanted to bring up tonight. That's House Bill 3154. It did fail. Representative West out of Moore required any school districts and career technology centers to notify every registered voter in writing of an upcoming bond issue elections, of any election not involving elected office, to publish ballot language on their website. We don't notify them in writing, but we do post ballot language on our website and get out information through social media and through press releases. That failed. As far as advocacy goes, and I want to tell all of our board members about this. Julie Miller brought this up as well. We have COSA legislative briefings every Wednesday at 9:00. Through the pandemic, they were offered via Zoom. They are still offering that option via Zoom, but most of us are going to the Capitol. Board members can receive one ethics point if you want to attend that via Zoom. And what we would do is we would just put your information in the chat, and Janine Barnett would send it over to OSSBA, and your points would be recorded. So I can forward those Zoom links on to you every week as soon as I get them. And if you want to join in, type in the chat that you're there, and you will get an ethics point. Personal communication, you know, we have a good relationship with Senator Coleman and Representative Luttrell. And then I converse with Ty Burns quite a bit a lot, because he will call me on questions he used to teach for us, and then with John Pfeifer. And Adam communicates personally with multiple legislatures as well. Our OEA and ACT has association leave, and members of our own ACT have already been to the Capitol, so...
And Ryan Taylor from East is going tomorrow.
Yes, I saw that. So then, after the weekly legislative updates, I send a weekly email to our employees and let them know what's going on, or send an email if there's a call to action. So our employees reach out to our legislatures, and they do so on their own. Any questions about legislation? We will keep you updated, and I usually keep hot topics updated in the weekly memo that I send to you. Okay, COVID update. Take a look at this. First one in a long time, and I hadn't been up here without a mask on. It feels pretty good. So I added a couple of extra weeks just to let you see how far we've come. And my colors didn't change very much on this, but we were up to 262.8 as far as our new cases per capita of 100,000 in K County on January 25th. We got down to our lowest on February 22nd at 25.6, and that was orange 2. 24.99 is orange 1. I can't remember the last time we were in orange 1. We went up just a hair March 1st. Now, I'm not sure how long we'll continue to have this COVID update from the Oklahoma State Department of Health, because as you know, I've shared information with you that the CDC has come up with national community risk levels by county, which will be updated late Thursday. We'll see what happens. I got my weekly update from OS DH today, and they are just going to update us once a week. They did not say how it will affect the COVID alert system. So let me show you where we are. Actually, I should have changed that, because I did change it at the end of the day today. We have two student positive test isolations in effect right now. One at West, and that student comes back to school tomorrow, so that will be a zero. And then we had a late Liberty case today and did not trigger a contact trace. So you all approved 3% at any site, mask or opt-out. Just strongly recommend. And what I report to you and what's on the website includes every department, the BOE, Transportation, CMP, we all follow that. And if one's out, if there's one affected in this office, it will trigger the mask mandate. Here's how we are for year-to-date. You can see it really hit us when we first came in and when the state department, or the health department was, you know, going back and forth about requiring quarantines or recommending quarantines. Then we leveled off. You can see that we were out for Christmas, and there was nothing. We had some employees, those are employee cases that are showing. And then Omicron hit us full force. And that's still with recommended quarantines. And you can see there's just been nothing. Even though there's two still on that list, the date they were affected was before 3/6, so they're not showing up on this list. So I've got some return to learn plan proposed changes for you tonight. So let's talk about those. There is new CDC masking criteria, and I put this in my memo. I haven't talked about this publicly. But the CDC is now recommending masking based on community level metrics. And there are three pieces of data by county that the CDC is analyzing. One is new COVID-19 hospitalizations. Two is the hospital capacity of our county. And three is the new cases. So it's a three-pronged metric for this decision-making. So there are three color-coded lists per county. So the green is low risk, which means no masking recommended, but stay up to date with vaccines. Yellow is medium risk. Masking is only recommended for immunocompromised or high-risk individuals. And then there's the orange, high risk, which means masking is recommended. So that tells you exactly what to do at each risk level. I copied and pasted that directly from the CDC. I will tell you, nothing changes on isolations as far as these new risk levels. It's still a five-day isolation, and you may return for five days fully masked if there are no symptoms presenting, no further symptoms presenting. So nothing changes there. We will still have some isolations. So look at this. Here we are, K County. I learned this late Thursday night, green level. This actually started last week, and we were at the high-risk level when our COVID-19 alert system was at the lowest, 25.7. Today, in the weekly update from OS DH, they said with Omicron, their numbers were way, way delayed, and reporting was delayed. So it was very inaccurate, because they had a hard time of keeping up. So that's where we are. We are at the low risk right now. It's exciting.
Do we know the three categories, how they're going to prioritize those or weight them? Or are we just going to go with the green, yellow, orange?
Well, I've got an option for you.
Okay.
So I'll talk to you about that. So this is for your consideration. If, okay, based on those three things for metrics, that data, if K County moves to the high level, the PCPS Board of Education will determine masking criteria with opt-out opportunities. And I'll get to that. I've got a couple of choices for you tonight, and I'm going to make a recommendation to you. Then this came out on February 25th, which was a week ago Friday. Masking on school buses, summary of recent changes. If you remember, January 29th of 2021, the CDC issued an order that all conveyances, everyone on a conveyance, public conveyance, had to be masked. And that included school buses, school vans, school vehicles. It was published in the Federal Register on February 3rd of 2021, so about a year ago. All right, so here's the new info. On February 25th, CDC is exercising its enforcement discretion to not require that people wear masks on buses or vans operated by public or private school systems, including early childcare, daycare, whatever. So they're making this change to align with their updated guidance. Now, look, I underlined, in areas with a low or medium COVID-19 community level. So I am making the recommendation tonight for these changes. And let's take a look. Nothing is going to change on if staff or student percentages of absence are high due to COVID. There could be an intermittent closure, because that could come up. Hopefully, we are beyond that. Then you all have approved that I can make the determination to transition to class or distance learning if percentages of COVID absences are high or if COVID spread is evident. Now, for low level, masks are welcome, but not required. There will be no changes to the current school day. Activities will be followed with no procedural changes. Current CDC isolations will be followed. So basically, when we're in the green level, it's back to normal, except for the isolations. Yellow, same exact thing. Now, I did mention it's recommended those at high risk for severe illness resulting from COVID-19 should discuss with their doctor whether they should mask or not. I recommend that we don't require that, because the CDC doesn't. All right, so here's Option A, which is not my recommendation, but I want you to hear it anyway. The Board of Education will make the determination, that should be if, if masking is required with an opt-out opportunity. The typical school day and school-related activities will be followed with no procedural changes necessary. Current CDC guidelines will be followed. So I, you know, Option A is basically saying you can make the determination tonight that if we go into the high risk, that we mask or opt-out. I would recommend B, what we've been doing. Masking will be required with an opt-out opportunity if 3% of the total site is affected with COVID-19. Because last week, we were at the high risk in the county, but we had like one person out. So I would hate for us to just go back to masking if it doesn't affect us. I also mentioned that masking will be required on buses with an opt-out opportunity. We have to at this point if 3% of the district is affected by COVID. So that amounts to about 160 kids. We haven't even been close to 160 kids. I can't remember. Well, I can look back at the chart, but it was late January. It's just felt really good lately not having to deal with that. Discussion there, what are your thoughts?
Is A or B more in aligned with the CDC's new three-phase guideline?
A.
That's what I thought.
But the health department came out today and said that their records weren't accurate, that they were behind.
But if we go with B, we're going against the CDC guideline. Correct?
I wouldn't say that we're, I wouldn't say we're going against. I would say that we're more kind of modifying what they're saying.
Well, and it's still a recommendation from the CDC to mask. It's still a recommendation from the CDC. There is not a mandate to mask at any level.
My question or concern, I guess, more than anything, is that if, but you're also saying, okay, so you're saying that the records may not be as accurate? Because I'm thinking, well, if the community's at high risk, regardless of whether it's not affecting our, inside of our schools, there's still the risk of spread, or, you know, the risk of that going into the schools if we don't mask up. So that would be my concern on that one. But if they're behind on the data, then that's why it's not reflecting the balance.
Right. My concern would be if we have to get to the point where we mask, where we need to mask, I would hate to do it if nothing's going on, because would they really take us seriously when it's time for masking? So hello. But it's your decision. I'm making the recommendation for B. Bottom line is 3% is not very many at a site. So if it starts creeping up, and it won't start creeping up unless the county's in high risk, then they're going to be masked up quickly anyway.
Putting on my parent hat, too. I'm wondering, how would that, I guess it would just be, you would just know the day before to send a mask with your kid, or always just have one on hand and get...
That's what we've asked our sites to do right now, is just to keep a mask on hand. And if we get, no, but since you all approved that change last month, we have had not one site, except the Board of Education. This office have to mask, so. I'm guessing that was our friend of education.
That's what I was wondering.
He said I told him. That's my guess. I'm guessing that was our friend of education. I bet she thought it started at 7:00.
She did.
Okay, okay.
I offered they could stay if they wanted to.
Okay, so...
There's that humor, that humor he was talking about in the prayer.
I'm concerned that B doesn't really play as well with the CDC as we have. We've held the line for two years that we... We've held the line for two years that we've followed CDC guidelines exclusively. And we're probably the only school in the state.
Without a shot of it out.
That has played that way.
Yes.
I'm concerned that if we pick B, that we're now changing what we've what we've held firm to.
Still a recommendation by the CDC. And that's why none of the schools are masking.
So if we pick B, can we still say we're following CDC guidelines?
I I would say that we will be following CDC guidelines. If it turns to orange, I lay odds that no one in the state will mask. I think we're going to be closer than anybody else if we have three percent. If three percent hits any site or the district, we know there's spread within the district. But that that is a board decision. And guys, we can change this every month if we need to.
I feel like we have more local control at B. That it's more us, it's not necessarily.
We can have a special meeting and change it.
But again, for two years, we have said we will follow CDC exclusively.
And that's a recommendation. So do we want to say mask up or opt-out? Or do we say we recommend that you mask up or opt-out?
Judy and Nancy, what do you all think?
I like B.
I think I I I like B.
I understand what you're saying.
I do too.
I I get it.
We've held tight, but.
That's why I put both options up there.
Um.
I think, you know, if, like she said, if it, we start getting a lot more cases or whatever, we can always have a special meeting to go back. I just feel like, you know, they've been masked a long time and.
Well, and that's the reason the CDC changed the guidelines. They wanted to relax those guidelines should they need to implement in the future.
And if you don't feel safe, you can still wear your mask.
Oh, that's for welcome.
I mean, they're just two different.
Right. Yeah.
It's mine.
Okay, so notice on here, there's nothing about wearing a mask on a school bus because that is the CDC recommendation unless we get down to that high level because they recommend masking backup on school buses if you're in that high level. Three percent of the entire district would be a hundred and sixty kids about. Uh, three percent.
Is that positive cases or is that quarantine?
That's isolation or close contact. Oh, mercy, a hundred and sixty cases that would, that's our highest ever.
Yeah.
Hundred and sixty cases. We would, we'd be in orange.
But are we doing that much close contact?
Not a lot because um we 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 still call every single parent if they're a close contact. A lot of our people have gotten really wise about symptoms and they'll keep their kids home and they're not a close contact. Our 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 staff, they can avoid that close contact less than six feet for fifteen minutes or more easily. Seldom do we have a staff member think they're a close contact to anyone. So this is on the agenda for you to vote. If you want to push it on down till later, we can do that. It's next on the agenda, isn't it, Jan?
I'm okay to vote or wait, whatever the other board members want to do. I'm ready, but if they need more time.
You want to wait or ready?
Let's do the vote.
Okay, for the vote, uh, recommendation is the protocol, safety protocols for B, but with option B at the high risk.
Sorry to see to make a motion. I make a motion for B.
Okay, I need a second.
Oh, I apologize. I can?
I think you can, but someone else can too.
I'll make a motion that we accept B.
And I'll I'll second.
Call for the vote. Mrs. Zimmershed.
Aye.
Mrs. Trup.
Aye.
Mrs. Rowland.
Aye.
Mr. Riley. Okay, that is it for the superintendent to report unless you have any questions or
Okay, we're on seven. Now, seven is consent agenda. Motion required from for the approval of consent agenda as printed or amended. Board members may however call for a separate vote on any or all items listed in the consent agenda. We have agenda with commentary, minutes from February fourteenth, twenty-twenty-two regular meeting, and contracts and agreements under ten thousand.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Thank you.
Call for the vote, Mr. Riley.
Aye.
Mrs. Rowland.
Aye.
Mrs. Trup.
Aye.
Mrs. Zimmershed.
Aye. Okay, eight action items, motion required. Um, this is consider and take action on the following district financial reports. We have A through M, budget amendments, uh, building fund encumbrances, booster club fundraiser request, um, activity reports, treasury reports, ratification and approval payroll. Going to need a motion.
Make a motion to take action on A.
I'll second.
Call for the vote, Mr. Riley.
Aye.
Mrs. Rowland.
Aye.
Mrs. Trup.
Aye.
Mrs. Zimmershed.
Aye. Okay. Consider and take action on revised Board Policy Section Two, Community Relations, Employee Fundraising. Okay, this is revision to Policy two-point thirteen dash two-point oh, Employee Fundraising to align the policy to current practice. Um, do Ms. Story, would you like to talk a little bit about it or?
Uh, it's just the policy that we have um in regard to crowdfunding, fundraising that has to be board-approved. And there were just a little couple tweaks in the wording.
I noticed that.
So we just updated it to the whole.
Okay, thank you. I need a motion, please.
I make a motion to move on to.
Second.
Call for the vote, Mrs. Rowland.
Aye.
Mr. Riley.
Aye.
Mrs. Zimmershed.
Aye.
Mrs. Trup.
Aye.
Okay. Consider and take action on the following contracts and agreement. A, agreement with three-sixty turf and outdoor equipment for purchase of a district mower. The total cost of that is ten thousand three hundred and sixty-six forty-eight. If we have any questions, we can ask Mr. Adam. B, estimate with Anderson Flooring to install flooring in the Registration Center, the cost of thirty-nine thousand nine hundred and ninety-nine forty-nine. C, agreement with Blue Market Energy. It's to purchase natural gas to Ponca City Public Schools. And this agreement is to sell and deliver natural gas necessary to meet Ponca City Public School requirements. The effective date would be April first, twenty-twenty-two, and the cost would be twenty thousand dollars. D, agreement agreement with Hidman Enterprise LLC for lawn care. And this agreement is for mowing, weed eating, and edging lawns at Liberty, Union, Trout, Washington, Woodlands, and brush hogging areas, and which includes Trout, Liberty, and Union, and West Middle School for the total cost of seventy-one thousand nine hundred and seventy-nine. E, we have a quote for IXL Learning for Site Licenses for High School Students for Math and ELA. And it will provide nine hundred and fifty high school students for math and ELE. The total cost is fifteen thousand two hundred and twenty. F, agreement with Johnsons for the Ponca City High School twenty-twenty-three year school uh yearbook. And the cost of that is thirty-five thousand dollars, seven hundred and ninety-three seventy-five. Okay. Agreement with Lunas Lawn Service for Lawn Care. And this is for, again, mowing and weed eating at the high school administration, West Lincoln Garfield Elementary, and the total cost is seventy-three thousand eighty. Uh, H, agreement with the municipal accounting system. And this is for accounting software system. Um, it's, the agreement is for software service agreement for the twenty-twenty-two, twenty-twenty-three physical year. The total cost of that is seventeen thousand dollars. Quote for pinnacle for Ruckus Wireless Controls, replacement of the current wireless controls that is out of warranty. Um, Mr. Ryan, can you talk a little bit about that, please?
Sure, that that's the the Ruckus controller is what we use to manage and control our wireless or connect all the access points on all the sites back to our main network so that we can, that we can like manage and make sure we are providing the best signal possible to the last.
Okay, thank you. And the cost of that is thirty-four thousand two hundred and seventy-seven fifty-seven. Okay, thank you. Um, agreement with Stephen H. McDonald and Associates for Financial Advisor. And this is a ratification of an agreement with Stephen H. McDonald and Associates in connection with issuance by the District of General Obligation Bonds. Um, he's a gentleman with the very fancy pins that we really like. Very nice man. Yes, 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 yes. Yes. Okay, quote by Vance Chevrolet Buick GMC. And it's for two Suburbans for our district and the cost is eighty-nine thousand six hundred and eighty-four dollars.
Which is really a good price, those are for two Suburbans on the state contract.
That's good.
I noticed on my consent agenda too, the wraps were.
Yes.
So we're going to need a motion.
I've got a question on for Adam. On D and G, are we committed to that total amount, Adam? Or is that, assuming we have a really dry summer? Or is that what the PO is open for?
That's a, so it's the total amount of the PO, but we have a price per mowing. So if there is a, we have appropriation in the dry summer, we don't have to mow it for two or three weeks in time, then we don't have to pay.
So we would not, so that's just the PO amount up to. Okay.
Uh-huh, it start, well, it starts in the spring and ends in the fall. After, yeah. Does anybody have any more questions?
I do. How often do they mow? I I know if it's, say, say we have a average summer, Adam, some rain, some dry.
I I know the answer to this. This is contracted for every ten days.
Every ten days.
You're right.
What did it used to be?
At ten to fourteen.
Yeah, ten to fourteen. That was too long.
That was terrible.
So this is for seven.
We look pretty bad.
Yeah.
We had a lengthy discussion about changing it to ten and property committee recommended.
We changed to seven, didn't we?
No, you guys just said to go ahead and go with seven.
Yeah, that's why it's same. We we went from ten to seven.
So it's seven, every seven days?
And it's, yeah, it's every seven days.
They're going to mow every seven days this year. Oh, okay. I thought you said.
I make a report every seven days.
That's assuming we need it. You know, if we have, we don't get it rained for six weeks straight.
Right. I can see that. So it's seven to ten, that's their.
No, last year it was ten to fourteen.
Right.
And we, you know, that's a high quote. We kind of talked about moving it to ten days, but it will only save three or four weeks from the mowing season, so. And the property committee said move forward with seven should the board approve.
Okay.
This was what we presented to the property committee.
Okay, so. Adam, does that include the leaf removal thing that we talked about?
No.
No.
Do that with your maintenance people.
No, a booster club was doing it.
You have more maintenance people over there?
Yeah, you can do that with your maintenance people.
I was hoping a booster club.
Booster clubs typically do that.
Yeah, and then. No, I found out. Well, with the booster, you get your Conoco money if you do your grant money and that really, that's, I take my leaf blower out at the softball field and we go to town with that. Yeah, that's what I found out. Okay, so I need a motion for A through K, please.
I move to approve A through K.
Thank you, Robin. Okay.
Anna second.
And Rob, yeah, Anna and.
Call for the vote, Mrs. Rowland.
Aye.
Mrs. Zimmershed.
Aye.
Mrs. Trup.
Aye.
Mr. Riley.
Aye.
Uh, motion and vote to convey an executive session for the following purpose, to discuss the possible termination, reassignment, resignation, and employee and personnel on the attached detailed personnel report, to discuss the purchase or appraisal of real property, and to discuss confidential conversations with the board attorney concerning pending claims and litigations. I need a motion, please.
I make a motion.
I'll second.
Uh, Mrs. Rowland.
Aye.
Mr. Riley.
Aye.
Mrs. Trup. Mrs. Zimmershed.
Aye.
Oh, I didn't see this.
Are we ready to go?
Okay, we're going to return to open session. Recital by the board president that minutes of executive session were kept by the board minutes clerk and will remain confidential. Seven, consider and take action on recommendations for termination, reassignment, resignation, and employment of personnel. Um, we do not have any current new business?
No, ma'am.
Nope.
We need a motion on the personnel report.
Sorry, we need a motion, please.
I'll make a uh motion to um whatever.
Personnel report.
I second.
Second. Okay. Call for the vote, Mrs. Rowland.
Aye.
Mrs. Trup.
Aye.
Mrs. Zimmershed.
Aye.
Mr. Riley.
Now we need to go ahead and adjourn.
Need a motion?
I make a motion to adjourn our meeting.
Mrs. Rowland.
Aye.
Mrs. Trup.
Aye.
Mrs. Zimmershed.
Aye.
Mr. Riley.